Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for joining me this afternoon on a wonderful day. The temperature outside is finally feeling bearable and the humidity is down. So I'm very excited about fall coming. And as you know, that with fall comes a special time of year and the temperatures are more forgiving. I hope that today I find you healthy and safe. And I wanted, before I get started, I want to go ahead and acknowledge that we have our principals in the Zoom meeting, as well as some department directors. And I cannot do the work that I do without the support of my leadership team. So it's always important for me to acknowledge them and acknowledge their contributions. And I want to specifically point out the contributions of some of the COVID reopening, return to learn committee and that Ms. Grecia, Ms. Ochoa, and Mr. Ramos, who helped aggregate the 192 questions that came in. Then we reviewed them to consolidate them into the like questions, because many of the questions were duplicates. And were able to help me ensure that we were responding as best as possible to your questions. I know that this is not the ideal situation. This is not the best way for me to get in front of the entire district. But I did want to, it's very important for me that I hear from you. I'm very happy that you were able to submit your questions to me. I'm also very grateful that you're letting me know your concerns as they come in. Because right now, what we do know is that there is no true certainty in anything that we do. And I continue since that first message to tell you that we need to treat each other with kindness and with grace and to allow for that flexibility as we move forward. Because the answers that I give you today, unfortunately, they may not be the same answers a week from now. And that's not because I mean to be inconsistent or not to give you the latest information, but information changes. And as we get the newest information from the TBC, the DEA, the URL, local health officials, I'm always going to move that information forward to you so that you've got the latest information. I also understand that the questions that I reviewed today, I will have a written response to the questions in a frequently asked questions document, and I will distribute that. I had some questions coming from principals of latest through 12. And I wasn't able to put those onto the presentation for today. We have approximately 72 questions. I don't expect you to stay online for more than an hour. But if you choose to stay on, then that is your choice. But I will try to go as quickly as possible through these by giving them the attention that they deserve. These questions are insightful. They're letting me know what your concerns are. They're letting me know what's on your mind. And of course, you know, after reviewing the debates last night, I know that now more than ever, you know, I need to leave with compassion. I need to leave with grace and with love and with respect. And respect for the work that you all do and the work that you put in for our kids. Because everyone in the district is working hard. But I want to make sure that our efforts are aligned and that we're working on the right things as we move forward. So with that, please know that my first priority is to ensure the safety and the health of our staff and our students. And that our response to the COVID-19 pandemic is always going to err on the side of caution. One of the questions that is in the questions that you all submitted is, is the district planning on submitting for an extension based on the latest allowable extension from the Texas Education Agency? That's a discussion that I will have with the board. And the board would be the one that would approve an additional extension to the virtual remote learning situation. And if so, if it is something that they voted on and approved, then I would immediately seek that waiver and continue the extension of the distance and remote learning. So because we are in El Paso County and there is a high incidence of COVID and COVID-related illness, we do have the opportunity to continue to apply for an extension on that. So it's my intention to inform the board with the latest information and then of course take direction for them as we move that forward. So know that I know that that's on your mind first and foremost. I also know another thing that is heavy on your minds right now. And because many of you have either had spouses that were laid off or work that has stopped for some of some of the significant people in your household. I know that finances are a big pressing issue on your mind. They're also a big pressing issue on the mind of the district. The board is being very physically conservative at this time. And I'm helping guide some of that information because we know that our enrollment is down. We also know that our average day attendance is down. And the last thing we want to do as a school district is to let people, you know, reduce any of our staff. So we want to be physically conservative so that we don't have to make any cuts to staffing. Because the last thing we want to do is to not have a person have a job during this difficult time. What that means is just as for the last four to 10 years I've been told, remember I got here September 10th, there has not been a step increase in the teacher salary pay scale. There have been increases in pay through either an all across the board raise or there have been retention payments that have been made at different points in the year. Right now, we want to make sure that our projected budget based on our enrollment and our ADA is consistent with being able to keep our staffing at the current levels. And we don't ever want to get to a situation where we go to a point where we have to consider certain positions. So I know that that is not good news, but know that the budget was already approved. Before I got here, the step increases are not automatic and haven't been automatic for a very long time in Epcot, JELSA, and C. So that's not good news I share with you. But the good news I can share with you is that we have budgeted for the current positions and we are continuing to make sure that you have an assurance of that continuing on for the rest of the year. So those are the big things I want to get out of the way. I know that there's many, many questions that I'm going to answer. So I want to get right to them. I'm going to share my screen with you so that you can see the questions and get an idea. Again, somebody earlier asked me today, will we be able to see these questions later? And I indicated yes, I will put the answers next to them. And then we will add also the ones that came in this afternoon. So the very first question is about how the administration, and I assume the administration is the district and principals, how we're going to inform students of the guidelines and the protocols to return to campus. So just like we had open houses for students, I'm anticipating that we will also host virtual meetings for parents on the return. And we will inform students through Canvas. We will also send out through our normal channels of communication those meetings. And I also expect to participate in those meetings that are led by principals that inform the parents about the expectations for their children when they return, what the guidelines would be, should, you know, should we have a COVID positive case, what the protocols are, what our social distancing requirements are. Anything that parents need to know, an orientation of returning back to school, we're going to host those meetings virtually and that's what the expectation is. The second question that came up was about if a teacher's teaching hybrid, are they going to get a stipend bonus? Right now, the expectation or the plan is that if teachers returned, they would return for a five-day-a-week, normal working hours type of position. So there would not be an additional stipend or bonus. That compensation, of course, as I mentioned earlier, has already been budgeted for the year. There's no funds to draw from to give additional stipends or bonuses for teachers who are in a different type of position. But all the expectation would be that if the teacher's working the five-day normal salary work week, that they would be compensated at the normal rate of pay. The third question is specific to Head Start. Head Start did submit a return to learning plan. Their plan does follow along with ours. It does go along with CDC guidelines. So if there's any kind of discrepancy in the plan, or any staff become aware of it, please bring it to the attention of the campus administrator. And we will be sure to address any issues with that. But I have reviewed the Head Start plan and it is in alignment with our plan as well. So the plan for hybrid learning currently, and remember I told you that what I tell you today is not always going to be the same answer next week. Because we say we are in the middle of a pandemic and we are adapting and adjusting as needed. The current plan for hybrid learning is that we're going to continue, of course, to utilize the Canvas learning management system. We're going to have students alternating on what we're calling the A days or B days. Or if we would like to brand them, we can call them gold days and black days. And there we would have students come, let's say, for example, Monday, Wednesday. And then another group of students come on a Tuesday, Thursday. And they would have three days off based on that schedule. So that would be two in person and then three virtually. That's the current plan for hybrid learning. We're very flexible in our plan. Later on, and I'm going to add to your session now, somebody asked if there was a teacher voice, oh, here it is, number six, that teachers should have voice. I completely agree. Teachers should have a voice when it comes to the safety of staff and students. Students were part of the, our district's return to learn committee. We selected the teachers of the year and we were able to get representation. But that doesn't mean that the plan is fully developed or that the plan has stopped. So the intention then is to continue to get more and more people on the committee because we wanted to start small so we could move quickly and then spread out the plan to a wider audience. So I want to move through the site-based decision-making team, get more teacher participation. And, you know, because I believe that the teacher is the most important factor in a student's achievement and behind that is the principal. So it's more important that we always hear about, you know, teacher voice and that that comes in. We're getting reports, Mr. Thalas, that the sound is bad on YouTube, I guess. I don't know if you could have Mr. Thalas check that. The next question was, can we take turns coming in with a schedule? And I have to check my notes on this one. We have surveyed everyone. We've had over 400 responses as of today. That questionnaire has asked who's planning on returning and who may need to stay home based on the medical situation and the personal situation. Based on that, we're reviewing that data. We know that we want to be consistent with when people return. So if you're returning, the expectation would be...
Yes, sir. Can you, do you have a fan on in your office?
Yes, let me turn it off. The next question was, can we take turns coming in with a schedule? And I have to check my notes on this one. How's that? All right, I turned my fan off. Hopefully that does a little bit better. So right now, the expectation with scheduling is if you're returning to work, you would return for the five days of your work week. And that there would be those that have a necessity to stay home based on their personal medical condition or personal needs would stay home. So there would not be a rotation of teachers. Question seven talks about, again, will all teachers be required or will some stay home? Again, that's based on the questionnaire and based on personal conditions, whether it's through the FSCRA, FMLA, or the ADA accommodations that some people may require based on their medical conditions. Number eight talks about parents changing their mind. Right now, the expectation is that every six weeks that the students would have an opportunity to choose face-to-face instruction. Again, we're being as flexible as possible. We know that we want to maintain social distancing in the classroom and we also want to maintain the integrity of classrooms. But we, again, and I hate to be a butt the record on this, but we are in the middle of a global pandemic and we do have to show some flexibility with whether or not students may be reassigned just based on the numbers and based on the spacing requirements in the classroom. I covered number nine right off the bat. Yes, we would continue to seek a waiver based on the local health data and also based on the infection rate for the local community, as well as making sure that the board was behind or supported the continuation of distance or remote learning. So once the in-person classes begin with a schedule saying stay the same as our current role, again, we want to be flexible. We want to meet the needs of our students. We know that our current schedule may need to be modified and adjusted based on transitions, based on the fact that some students have special requirements for CTE or agriculture. So we know that the schedules that are currently in place are not going to stay set in stone. We know that we're going to have to be flexible and adjust to our students and make sure that they get the specific needs that they have met based on the return to administration. It should work side by side with counselors and the teachers to make sure that we keep the integrity of the schedule as close as possible. But know that it, I cannot say yes if it stays the same because right now, nothing is staying the same. Everything has been continual flux and we need to be flexible as that moves on. So what is the plan for teachers going back to school? So currently, we again have asked parents, what is their preferred mode of instruction? Whether they're going to keep their students remote, they're going to bring them in a hybrid fashion, or they're going to bring them fully back face-to-face. As we do that, the principal is coordinating with central office and we're ensuring that we match the needs of the students and the number of students returning to campus with the number of teachers who will be able to teach face-to-face. So that's the current plan. I know that, you know, there's other districts, you know, we always think that the grass is greener somewhere else, but we don't know what fertilizer they're using over there. So it's always, it's always good to make sure that what we do is good for Epcot, JELSA, and it's good for our community. Let me see if I can scroll up. So going to question 12, if the teachers return, will they continue online lessons? Or will they be working on separate in-person lessons? So the expectation there or the plan is that we continue to do the synchronous portion with the in-person students as well as the online lessons for students who may need that in an asynchronous fashion. So there's no distinction here. We want to make sure that there's continuity. Because what would happen if, you know, there was a spike or we have cases at our school and we had to shut right back down? We would not want our students to miss a beat. They would go right on with Canvas and they would continue their lessons remotely. So we want to ensure that that alignment between the Canvas LMS and the in-person instruction remains consistent. So the question here, number 13, if we go back, will we be teaching a homeroom class? Again, that depends on the students that are returning. And so, you know, it's unfortunate that not all students will return. I anticipate that we will have a small number of students returning and we will phase those students in, prioritizing the students that haven't had internet access or device, prioritizing students in special education and students who have one of the outreach credentials or one of the outreach components. Or maybe they're English learners and they need more time to develop their proficiency in the second language. Those are the students, of course, that we would target. So it's not going to be able to maintain that integrity of a specific homeroom class. So we will be, of course, designating time for you to ditch your roster and figure out which students you need to reach out to and which ones you'll be working with. Question 14, can we have teachers in the classroom and other personnel as a protector in another classroom with a student? Again, that's, you know, that's really not something that's feasible at this time, at least in the current plan. We would expect that the teacher of record for the students would be the one that would be face-to-face with the students. I know that you may have heard that other districts have teacher assistants in the classroom while the teachers are remote. Again, I, you know, I think that our teacher assistants are just as important as our teachers. And that we want to treat everyone as fair as possible. So I would, I would want the teacher assistant and the teacher to be available to our students in a face-to-face situation. Question 15, it talks about scheduling our students in nap times and nap time for pre-K3. We would stay as consistent as possible with the current schedule. We will continue to allow students to progress in the same school day if they were face-to-face. So not to say it's going to be exactly the same because we have to allow for bathroom situations and other things that may come up because of COVID. So just know that you'll work with the campus administrator and the curriculum department to ensure as normal a schedule for that as possible. Question 16 asks us about if we need to limit interactions, how are students receiving services? So every student in regards to their IAP, IEP acceleration plan, we are going to deliver those services as indicated in that plan to the greatest extent possible. So that means that if the IEP calls for a specific service to be delivered, then the expectation is that that service would be delivered consistent with the IEP or the IAP or the acceleration plan. For onsite instruction, is it possible to rotate teachers on every six weeks? Again, the current plan is that we would have those that can return, return, and those that through some reason, medical or otherwise, or ADA accommodation, they would, they would be teaching remotely as well. But so there's no possibility here or there's no thought, at least right now in the current plan, to have teachers rotate on a six-week basis. The question 18 talks about will all students be able to return on October 26th or will there be a maximum capacity? So every student has the option to return on October 26th. That does not mean, based on the current survey that parents, you know, we reached out and some campuses got to 100%. Thank you, campuses, for reaching out to every parent. Right now, the current data does not indicate that we would even be anywhere near a maximum capacity. Because there are parents that, you know, are apprehensive about bringing their children back. So we wouldn't expect us to get anywhere close to a maximum capacity. But we do know that students do have the opportunity to return on October 26th if they so choose to do, parents choose to do children. Question 18, can office staff work from home? At this time, only teachers and teacher assistants are working from home. And then based on the return plan, we do expect that those teachers and teacher assistants would return back based on, again, on whether they're able to or whether they have a specific personal need to work at home. So the answer to that question is basically, no, office staff cannot currently work from home. We're not affording a shorter work day or staggered work schedule. Next question is, will we have a teacher work day to fix our room sizes and extra rooms? That is something that we want to coordinate with teachers because we understand that because of your dedication, you feel compelled to create the best environment for kids. And I applaud you for that. So yes, we would try to work in a day where you can actually come in and get your rooms ready for your students. So that option is there, you know, based on, again, if you're going to come back and do that, get your classroom ready, we would accommodate that for you. Question 21 talks about will we have planning time to plan our lessons? Consistent with current practice, you have built into your schedule time to plan those lessons. So we would continue to have planning time for planning lessons. And again, the expectation is that there's an alignment between the Canvas LMS and what you're currently going to do in a face-to-face situation. So the planning should continue as you've been doing all along. Will we be able to get substitutes? Yes, the plan is that we will have substitutes as needed, you know, if you're ill or if you have a personal day or some kind of requirement. So the plan is to train substitutes to be able to go into the Canvas LMS or to step into the face-to-face situation and be there to provide you support should you need to be off on a school day. Who will be watching students as some teachers will come in? Again, based on the survey response or should I say the questionnaire response, there will be sufficient teachers that are coming in. We have had a overwhelming response of teachers that have said that they will come in. So I don't anticipate that we will have more students than teachers. Twenty-four, if we say no to the questionnaire, will teachers have an option to work from home? Again, that is based on your personal situation. You would, of course, review the FSCRA, the FMLA, the ADA accommodations. You would, you know, work with your physician to figure out if there's a way for you to take advantage of one of those opportunities. So again, based on saying no, it all depends on your personal situation. And you have, you have multiple options to explore that if that is a necessity for you. Question 25, if we have healthcare concerns and the questioner sent to them on the after they plan to return, if one answers no, is this the final answer for district employment? Absolutely not. You're not resigning your position if you answer no. You are basically indicating that you have some kind of concern that needs to be reviewed by HR and that you need to provide some sort of documentation or need to further explain your situation. And so if you answered no and you indicated a reason, please expect to have a follow-up phone call or email to ask you to either provide further documentation or to inquire about your specific personal situation. So, you know, I had that question coming over the weekend and answered it to one person. But just because you put no, that doesn't mean you're giving up your position. Survey sent to staff didn't really address any concerns, some of which are reworking. So we can't answer no and give us concerns. What if we don't feel safe and everyone comes back? So the reality of it all, I'm going to check my notes so I don't say the wrong thing. But again, this is, everybody has personal and unique circumstances. You know, I hope that you feel safe based on the PPE that we're going to provide, the distance requirements, the mitigating practices that we're going to put in place. And I know that it doesn't always make everyone feel safe, but you run into the same risks, you know, whether you're out at HEB or you're, you know, going to run an errand out in public. But the most important thing to keep in mind is that the mitigating factors, the... But the most important thing to keep in mind is that the mitigating factors, the social distancing, the face mask, the face shield, all of those things are what is recommended so that we can mitigate and reduce the spread of COVID. So if we do those practices, if we put those practices in place and we do the temperature checking and we do all of those, those things that we know can help us screen for COVID, then I hope it makes everyone's anxiety come down a bit. But the reality is, I'm not going to, I'm not going to make anything here. I mean, I personally meet with several individuals every single day. They sit in my office, at my desk here, they're within three feet of me. And the thing that's keeping both of us safe is that we're wearing our masks. And I do that with countless people every single day. My anxiety level goes up, of course, but I know that I'm here because I'm here to do a job and I, and I hope that, you know, we all feel the same way. So I think the more we practice safe practices, you know, I went and saw the football players today. I was able to see them doing their temperature checks, wearing their face covering, spacing out. These are all things that our students want to enjoy. Football, they want to enjoy being on the field. They know what they have to do to stay safe. So I would expect that our staff would do the same things. So I know that I can't assure you enough that everything's going to be safe because nobody can give you those answers right now during this global pandemic. But I know that those concerns will always be there, but if we put the mitigation practices in place, then we can make everyone feel safer. Question 27, I don't know if the governor specifically said it's not safe for RGV to reopen further. I know that there was consideration because Eagle County is, has higher rates of infection than other places. I also know that the TEA was also the one that stepped in and the commissioner, Commissioner Murak allowed us to make that extension that we talked about earlier today. We're not reopening because we think it's a great idea. We're reopening because we know that our students are vulnerable, our students need a place to come back to. They need the social emotional support. We got into this business because we care about kids, because we care about families. So even though it's not the ideal situation, again, if we put those practices in place, if we social distance, we wear masks, if we wash our hands, if we do the sanitizing, if we clean every day, we're going to reduce the spread of COVID in our own, our own environment, our own schools. So we're reopening based on the fact that we already got a four-week extension. And if we need to, we can continue to get extensions, but at some point, our students really need us and we need to be able to serve our students. Will the water pumps be disabled? Yes, they will. Right now, the plan is that we will order some water from Child Nutrition and we will continue to supplement that water. We also have not finalized or settled upon whether students can bring their own water bottles. The issue if they were to bring their own water bottle is that they would have a difficult time refilling it without a water fountain. So if they brought it, it would only be for the duration of that bottle and then it would be done and they'd have an empty bottle. So we're going to supplement that and provide drinking water through bottles for our students. We don't, we don't want them touching the faucets and we also don't want them putting their mouth close to do their low water pressure. So we're going to disable the faucets and then provide water for our students. I answered number 29 right off the bat and we'll be moving to number 30. Number 30, we're going to continue to follow CDC and local health guidelines. This will not be a policy. This is guidelines and practices that we're putting in place for our district. It'll be in our safety plan. It'll be the plan that we share publicly and the plan that we'll continue to get feedback on, the indicated from additional staff members, from teachers. But this will not be policy. Board sets policy and policy is about the governance of the district and this is more about the practices and guidelines that we want to put in place. Will the campus provide disinfectant materials? Yes, the district will be providing some disinfection materials along with the PPE. The Texas Education Agency has provided us with some PPE and will be ordering additional PPE. And we will also be providing some classroom-type disinfectant materials because of course we expect that the custodial staff will be using the heavier disinfectant materials as they do their daily cleaning and daily sanitation. The plans, again, just like you see when you go into a hotel, I know that when I was traveling down here, I had to stay at a hotel and when I went in the room, there was a card and on that card it said, this is what we've done to your room. You know, we write down high-tech surfaces, we did this to the sheets, we did, you know, all this, we sprayed it with Lysol. It was the logo, Lysol logo. But anyway, all that to say is that we're going to create a checklist that indicates when the certain areas were cleaned and that we can go back and figure out when the last time something was clean and if all of the protocols were put in place, if all the high-tech was clean, if all the desks were wiped, et cetera, et cetera. So there'll be a plan in place to account for when those classrooms were disinfected and how they were cleaned. And again, I'm not going to get into the details of specific clean protocols, but do know that we are reviewing that to make sure it's in alignment with CDC guidelines. What preventative measures will be put in place for the district to ensure teacher safety and school cleanliness? Again, day-to-day cleaning, providing PPE, providing some antinatizers, making sure that we're fully stocked with soap. We've ordered touchless dispensers for restrooms and touchless vapor towels, dispensers as well. So eliminating as much touch as possible on any of those devices as well as continuing to have custodial expectations with being accounted for on those cleaning checklists. Thirty-four, yes, you're correct. There has been a lot of information about air conditioning vents that spread the virus. I don't know if any of that has been proven. A lot of disinformation comes from companies who are selling air sanitizing equipment. So when we hear the word many of our rooms don't have access, I want to make sure we know which rooms. So would you please let your principal know if there is a room that doesn't have adequate ventilation? I don't anticipate that we have many rooms, but I do anticipate that there may be some. And again, because we have so few students coming back, we may be able to, you know, change the classroom space or move it to a more ventilated area. There is no current plan right now to buy special filters or special filtration equipment. It's just cost prohibitive. It's not something that we could sustain as a district to purchase filters or filtration devices for the entire district. Will we be sanitizing areas after exposure and how long will it take? So if there were to be an active COVID case and we were able to trace it, of course, we would sanitize the area. And of course, we would follow guidelines from the TEA and from local health officials on, on making sure that that area was safe before anyone would return. So yes, we would sanitize these areas and the duration would depend on the level of exposure. Will the district provide regular testing for employees? Again, that's not part of our plan. It's also cost prohibitive for us to test all employees. If you feel the need to be tested, please seek your, you know, a test on your own if you feel that you need to. I don't believe that we could regularly test employees. And again, we have run into issues with HIPAA violations if that information were to get out. It's just not something that we would do. But of course, we would continue to encourage you to self-screen. We are expecting self-screening on a daily basis. The plan is to have a QR code that you can scan with your phone, indicate whether you have any of the checklist symptoms. And then if you were, then of course, we would follow up with the protocols for, to make sure that everyone was safe and that there hasn't been any contact with other people. So just, we will not have regular testing, but we will continue to expect employee self-screen and that student, student, parent self-screen at home. Thirty-seven, to limit exposures can I move you to them virtually? We're doing this on virtually now. I would expect that if that was something that your staff worked on at the campus and you had the devices and you were able to communicate with each other, then I think that that's an idea that you could put in place. Again, if you're trying to limit exposure to meetings, then I would also anticipate that you're limiting exposure to your peers in eating situations, in, you know, just social situations and hallways. So again, if that's an option for you, then I would suggest that you continue to meet virtually if that would make people feel more at ease. Will we have an open door policy to reduce touching door handles? It is going to be strongly recommended that you choose to leave your door open. It would not be required that you leave your door open. We know that if you left your door open, that there would be less likelihood of students grabbing or not visitors, but support staff coming in and touching the door handles. So that is going to be teacher choice. But again, it's going to be recommended that you leave it open so that there's less touching, but that'll be entirely up to you as a classroom teacher. For face-to-face, how will students arrive and be dismissed? The current plan is to arrive on campus and we have students arriving by bus and drop-off and we have walkers as well. So we would have designated campus procedures that principals would help develop alongside with central office. And then we're going to make sure that we're again complying with the social distancing guidelines and ensuring that students continue to wear those face masks so that, you know, we mitigate the spread of COVID-19. Number 40, and we're almost halfway there, so bear with me. How does social distancing look like during the dismissal time? Again, it's going to look a lot like arrival time in where we're going to be staggering it based on the campus plan. We're going to adhere again to those social distancing guidelines. And then it's also going to depend on the layout of the campus and the plan that the campus administrator has put in place to, you know, alleviate the traffic flows and make sure that students aren't congregating in common areas as they leave the building. Number 41, will we be responsible for stopping fights that may occur? Again, we would expect that the administrators and the security staff would be the ones that would stop any fighting that might occur. And of course, just as a matter of fact, you know, if you see something or a student in danger where their life is at risk or something, I would expect that you would intervene and then if you felt that you were exposed or something like that occurred, then we could deal with that on an individual situation. But the quickest answer, and this sounds terrible, is the same people who stopped the fights before. So that would be the expectation. In order to avoid further contamination or spread, we continue with online learning through these devices or restricted to have paper handouts. Again, that's going to depend on the objective of the lesson. We can continue with the online learning because again, you're aligning the Canvas LMS with the instruction that's happening. But if there is a point where you would issue a handout or a piece of paper, then you could have the students leave in there at the end of the period and then, you know, pick them up later. But again, that's all going to be depending on what instructional plan you have in place and how you want to do that and how you want to address that with students. What are the consequences for students that refuse to follow CDC guidelines or threaten or joke about having COVID-19? Will they be required to learn remotely? So the expectation, of course, is that students follow the student code of conduct. We are going to talk to our students as teachers, as administrators, to let them know that this is not something to joke about, that it's serious. My conversation with our football player this morning, I told him that they're the leaders in our, there's some of the leaders in our schools. So the expectation is that they model social distancing, that they model mask wearing. And I think we have to have those conversations with our kids, you know, if they behave badly, we teach them how to behave, right? We also have students with disabilities who may have a behavior plan. So we're going to have to be able to address students in that same manner. We're going to have to be able to be prepared to route them to the appropriate place. So whatever the student code of conduct is, we would treat it as insubordination or whatever the conduct is, and then we would deal with them in the disciplinary manner as we always have. Is it necessary for everyone to return if used to the show? Again, to be equitable and to be fair to those that are returning, we would, of course, begin the very slow phase in with volunteers, volunteer teachers, volunteer TAs. And then as we ramp up on the 26th, if we have a portion of students returning, the expectation would be that all staff return because, you know, why would some staff not return and some stay home? We want to be equitable and want to be fair across the board with that. If students are not able to share school supplies, will these children receive their personal set of materials? Let me check my notes on that one. So the campus will, of course, communicate the school supply list to the parents and extra supplies will be given to teachers who do not bring supplies with them. So we would ask the parents to supply the students' personal supplies and then if we had students that didn't have any, we would augment them with district supplies. Will there be a transition period for students to begin? That's question 46. So on October 26th, students again have the option to receive instruction in one of three ways. They can continue with virtual learning, they can come in on a hybrid basis, or they can come in fully in-person on campus. So the transition will look like students choosing one of those three options. And we know that we're not going to have a large amount of students reporting the very first time we roll this out. And so the transition, going back to what I said previously, you know, we want to prioritize those students that may have not had internet access or a device, also the students that need the most support. So we want to make sure that we transition with them first and then, of course, know that students will be choosing one of those three options for the 26th. Question 47, will students be rotating classrooms or stay in one classroom all day? So for the elementary level, that's pretty easy to answer. We could say that at the elementary level, we want our students to stay in the classroom. We know that at the secondary level, we want to limit the transitions as much as possible. We want to make sure that those students that do have to go to CTE or do have to work specifically in a different classroom have that option, but we don't want to eliminate those options from our students. So I would anticipate that elementary stays in the same classroom all day. And then at the secondary level, we'll have blocks scheduled to eliminate the number of transition, the number of transitions, but there will be a need for students to transition, but we will monitor them and make sure that they're going from a classroom, when they switch classrooms, that they're going from a classroom that's been used to a classroom that has been cleaned before the other students come in. Forty-eight, is it allowed, will students or parents be allowed? We are going to limit visitors to schools and offices to essential, people that are essential to school operations. We want to continue the virtual methods of meetings, whether it's through ARDs or whether it's meetings with parents. We can continue those virtual meetings, but if there is an essential school personnel that comes in, we want to continue to make sure that they come in, but maybe not go as far into the building or, you know, make sure we check their temperature, make sure that they're wearing the proper PPE and then, of course, let them come into the building as needed. Will students need to bring their own water bottle? Again, that decision isn't final, but if they do, know that they may not be able to refill that bottle once they've exhausted their first fill of that bottle. Are students going to be allowed to go to PE and recess? The current plan does not indicate time for PE. We would have our PE coaches do some form of virtual PE as well as light kind of exercises because we don't want students generating sweat and then being in contact with each other. We also don't want students climbing on high-tech surfaces and then other students grabbing on those same surfaces. So right now, the plan is not to have PEs per se with kids in the gym, you know, getting all sweaty and running into each other, or to have recess. So for in-person classes, will students have recess? It's the same type of question, but this goes more to monitoring. So the campus will work out a schedule as far as who's monitoring the recess and what that looks like in the rotation for the students' schedule. Do you know that teachers, of course, will have a duty-free lunch and that duty-free lunch will be covered? How will the district have our elective classes? Again, we're limiting transitions. We want to make sure that we don't want to congregate large groups of students in one area. So that may mean that access to the library is limited. that PE does not occur because we, again, don't want students congregating in large groups and sweating around each other. We want to make sure that those bodily fluids are transferred. And then we're going to continue with the virtual PE in that case. For in-person classes, will restaurants be sanitized after every single use? We do have a plan to have a custodian department clean bathrooms on a regular schedule. It doesn't mean after every single use, but it means more frequent. Bathroom facilities will be closely monitored and any disinfectant procedures that we need will be utilized. We, of course, want everyone to be vigilant as we continue to have students come in. If you see something that needs attention, of course, you would make somebody aware of that. And again, we would utilize those tracking sheets to make sure that those bathrooms are being cleaned with more frequency. Will students and teachers be required to wear masks? Yes, 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 yes. That is going to be the most effective way to mitigate the spread and to make sure that we're staying safe is that, yes, we will wear masks. Is it suitable for any plexiglass shields for teachers and students' desks? Well, we know that we have ordered plexiglass shields for students' desks and that they are expected to arrive. We're putting our effort in place to have them in place by the twenty-sixth. Again, know that we don't expect a full capacity of students to show up on the first day. So if we get limited supply, we will deploy it to the places where we have students. But yes, the plan is to make sure that those plexiglass dividers are in place by the time they start on October twenty-sixth. We are now on question fifty-six. What PPE safeguards does the district provide for students and staff members if we return to campus? Again, face masks will be provided, plexiglass shields for students' desks, hand sanitizers, remote, not remote, plexus dispensers and paper towel. So we would also have the higher level of cleaning and sanitizing by our custodian staff. Will students be provided with a mask and desk shield? So again, we're going to request at this point from parents that they bring in their own face covering. But in the event that they don't have one, the campus will have a supply to issue them to students. And again, we're providing those desk shields. And we're also going to make sure that we use seating charts so that we know which students were sitting in what areas of the classroom and that we adhere to those seating charts with fidelity. Will teachers be provided with PPE? Yes, you'll be receiving a face shield, reusable. And then, of course, disposable face coverings in the event that you may need one. You don't have to use the one we provide, but if you need one, we will provide it for you. Will the students eat breakfast and lunch? So the plan is for students to be eating breakfast and lunch in the classrooms. Again, remember to have their plexiglass shield dividers. Teachers have a duty-free lunch. Students will be socially distanced. They will continue to make sure that they clean up after themselves as well as that we clean up anything that may spill or needs attention. We are adjusting transportation to keep the number of students low. Mr. Rodriguez has put together a plan that was shared at the last board meeting on where students would be sitting on the bus. But we are adhering to CDC guidelines to keep the ridership low on each bus. For students riding the bus, will their temperatures and symptoms be checked? Right now, we're going to ask parents to self-screen. We are also going to pilot the temperature screening because we know that we also don't want to make students late because we're checking their symptoms. Or we check a symptom with a thermometer that is not accurate, that we may have to leave a student at a bus stop when the parent has already departed for work. So we're going to work through all that. But again, we're pushing the self-screen. And we will, if any student needs to be temperature screened, we will, of course, temperature screen that student. How many students will be allowed in the classroom? So that, again, is based on the schematics, the dimensions of the classroom. Certain classrooms are larger than others. We also want to maintain that recommended social distance. It's going to depend on the size of the classroom. And then again, knowing that we're mitigating or we're putting in the face coverings in place, not to say that we can lessen the distance for six feet, but remember that the six feet is when you cannot wear a face mask. So we're going to spread them out to six feet. That's the plan. If it's five feet and eleven inches, I don't expect there to be a big pushback. Just know that we are working to spread the students out at six feet recommended distance and that they have their plexiglass shields and their face covers as well. The student has said schools can shut down for Fridays to clean when a case has been confirmed. Again, I don't know if the governor specifically said that, but it would be, it would be based on the level of exposure. You know, working in conjunction with the campus administrators and what's been reported. We're always going to follow the TA recommendations based on what is needed. And I'll give you a perfect example. So if I had a student who was temperature screened on the way in and then we took them to the care room where they're going to be held for their parents to come pick them up, that student never really made it into the campus, was only in the campus for twenty minutes, came into contact with maybe the school nurse and the temperature screening person. So we wouldn't shut the entire campus for five days to clean the campus if that student were to test positive. So I mean, that's just one example, not to say that's what happened, but it would be taken on a case-by-case basis. If the need is to shut down for five days, then we will definitely shut down for five days too because we always, as I said, want to be safe and healthy with our staff and our students. Where can we report unsafe practices and not following guidelines? Please report those to your supervisor or your department head. I also noticed on our website that we have a reporting tool there. If you want to report it there, please report it there as well. But always check with your supervisor or your department head just like you would with any other safety commission. You would always say, hey, there's a fence taped in here. You know, I think you need to know about it. And then if it isn't being addressed, then of course, you take it up to the next level. But I'm sure that your administrators are going to be working with you to make sure that we're following the guidelines. What happens if students confirm to have a COVID case? Will the whole school shut down or just that class? Again, based on my previous answer, it's the same type of response. We will follow the TA and CDC guidelines. We're going to adhere to those. We're going to follow our district protocols for individuals who have been confirmed or suspected with COVID. That information is available on our website. And I believe that there was a letter that previously went out that y'all have had some experience with. So again, we would follow our protocols and those procedures to make sure that we make the appropriate notifications. And if we need to shut the school down, we would. If we need to isolate that class based on contact tracing, then that's what we would do. So again, we would always follow the guidance of local health and CDC and TA as to whether we need to shut a school down or a classroom down in the event that that happens. What procedure will we have in place if a child or staff member tests positive with COVID-19? It's similar to what I just answered. We're going to make sure that we work in conjunction with the TA, with local health officials. And we're going to follow the protocol for notification, of course, respecting the privacy and the health information of all staff that are involved or any students that are involved. Same thing with sixty-seven. We're going to follow our district protocols. We're going to make sure that Human Resources sends out that letter to anyone who may have been exposed in that situation. And we also have more clarification on those procedures on our district website. Question sixty-eight, what if we do have a child in class that has a family member who tests positive? Will we quarantine that classroom or will we be told? So broken record here, follow CDC guidelines, will adhere to those as they relate to any individual who tests positive and the contact tracing that follows based on that. So yes, we are always going to notify appropriate people that need to be notified. We're not going to put it on Facebook. We're going to let the people know who need to know. And then we're going to be very transparent about that. But also know that if there are any confirmed cases in a public school, they're reported to the TA website. So you can monitor the TA website as well to see how other districts are reporting. We are required to report, so you would see that appear on that website as well. So just to know that all that information is public. As far, you won't know who, but you'll know that there was a confirmed case unless you needed to be notified because of contact tracing. Linking my place here and my eyesight. What question am I on? Help me out. Sixty-eight. What do we do if we have a child in class? Oh, that's what I just talked about. Sixty-nine, if we have a student with a high fever in the morning, mom takes off and the mom doesn't answer the pick-up her child, what do we do? The student's going to be screened upon arrival. We're going to have that room called the care room where the student will be isolated. And we will make every attempt to contact everybody on that contact list. So one thing that I do ask of all staff is that you confirm the best contact information from families right now because we are, if you're not broken record, we are in the middle of a global pandemic. More than ever, parents need to share their accurate contact information, whether your cell phone number has changed. Please, please, please ask parents to give me that information and let's update it in our student information system. So in the event that a child is sick, we can make sure that we address it as quickly as possible. And please know that while high temperature is one of the symptoms of COVID, it is not, COVID is not the only illness that would give us a high temperature. So one of the things we're going to have to be very cognizant of is that when we see a student alert on a high temperature or a staff member alert on a high temperature, we cannot automatically assume that that person has COVID-19 and start to spread that information because, one, you're violating that person's privacy and you wouldn't want anyone violating your privacy. But also, we need to know that just because you have a high temperature does not mean that you have COVID. Of course, we would ask the parent to get that child tested and to provide the quarantine or the proof before that child can return to school. Question seventy, insurance only pays one COVID test? And I'm assuming, that's the other thing, is there was a lot of assumption on these questions. So if, after I get done with my presentation, I didn't answer the question the way that you meant to ask it and I assumed something else, please follow up with your supervisor and then we'll add those to our FAQ. Or if, after what I said, you have more questions than answers, please feel free. I have no issue with you asking questions. They help us get better at what we do. They help us see the blind spots in planning. So please feel free to add to that list of questions when we're finished with this presentation. So my assumption is that you're talking about the district insurance. Will the district pay more than one, especially if you're going to get it more than once? That is a personal choice if you continue to be tested and especially if you're engaging in behaviors where you're committing contact with a lot of people or people who, you know, maybe you don't have a, you came around, somebody who may have been exposed. We're going to follow our guidelines and our recommendations. Your personal health insurance is your personal health insurance. So if you need to get an additional test, that would be your prerogative in your decision. We're not going to continue to pay for additional tests for, you know, people who may have been exposed outside of school. Of course, there's always the option, you know, if something were to happen at a campus, we can always be, I ask you to be flexible. We could always be flexible and determine whether or not we needed to do testing for a certain population of people who may have been exposed. So that's not a, that's not a no, but that's a not very likely. Will we get the two-week pay-in and FMLA for twelve weeks? Will we get disability? How long will we be compensated? Again, I really recommend that you read the FFCRA guidance. A lot of your teacher organizations like TCTA have some great information on their websites on how you can be eligible for FFCRA. FMLA, again, is for those that are eligible for the Family Medical Leave Act. We're always going to review those requests. And then as far as disability, I mean, that would be, again, be something between you and your health person to diagnose whether or not you have a disability. And then compensation will fall in line with the FMLA guidelines and with the FFCRA guidelines. So we would continue to follow those particular types of leave should you need them. So that concludes the seventy-one questions that were distilled down from one hundred and ninety-two questions. We are at four thirty-two, so I got it in right at about an hour, as I promised you. If I could share anything, it's one that I understand and I aim to lead with that compassion, with that love, with that grace and with that understanding that we are living in unprecedented times, that the answers that I give you today may not be the answers that you would like to hear, but they're the best information that I can give you at this time. I thank each and every one of you for the hard work that you put in to make sure that our students are taken care of every single day, whether it's cleaning the facilities, whether it's preparing their meals, and most importantly, when educating their minds. And then for our district leaders and for our campus leaders, for ensuring that you're responding to the questions that are coming up and the concerns that come up from different staff members. Thank you, thank you, thank you for all you do. I appreciate your time today. I will follow up with written responses to these questions and add on any new questions that may come. And I will distribute those to the districts so that you have those responses in writing. But also know that there will be a date on this document because what I told you today may not be the same thing that you're going to hear a week from now. So I want to thank the leaders that are on the Zoom call today for their input and for working hard. And please know that the plan is not final. The plan is what it is. It's a plan. To quote Robert Burns, you know, "The best laid plans of knights and men often go astray." So those are our best plans so far. And I'm sharing them with you because I think you need to know and I appreciate and value your feedback. So please expect to hear more about it as the plan rolls out. We will share a draft with a larger committee for review. And then we will move closer and closer to welcoming back as many of our students as possible. So with that, Ed Calzetti, Yellow Jackets, thank you so much. I'm so proud of you, Superintendent. I'm so proud that I'm here to, in this very difficult time. If I had to pick another time to be Superintendent, I would because right now it is very difficult. But I know that we're going to get to this together and that all of you are going to help us get there. So thank you, thank you, and enjoy the rest of your day and enjoy the wonderful weather. Goodbye.
Thank you.